Father, we thank you again for today. We thank you for your blessings, strength, wisdom. Thank you, Lord, that you are on the throne and trusting you for everything. Pray your blessing on the evening, blessing continuing on our community, our leaders and all those, Lord, that make these decisions. We pray in Jesus' name.
We need to, um, can't say the right word. Move the CCK budget request to July 6th. They are, um, I'll call an L and weren't even able to join the Zoom tonight. So we need to delay that for that reason. And then we need to add a discussion item, and that has to do with an update on the DOJ grant.
I'm going to do a pre-agenda as amended.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments? Being on then to proclamations, recognitions, presentations, and we're looking at the scholarship award for Taylee Murdock.
Taylee Murdock started her EMT class this last January and is completing it in the testing process. But part of the fire association and the fire department were part of the state association. There's a ladies auxiliary group that they manage all the grants, scholarships. We've had several students or kids and stuff apply over the years. Taylee's the first one from Concordia that I know of that's won a scholarship. That's been a Concordia student too. So she was unable to make the yearly conference, so I got the honor of presenting this certificate to her. It's on behalf of Kansas State Firefighters Auxiliary. It's the David Pitway Memorial Scholarship. David was a big firefighter for years and supported the auxiliary after he retired and just passed away last year. Scholarships for a thousand dollars for tenure education. So we think it's a great honor and very proud of her. Appreciate it.
Okay, now the Frank Carlson Library Budget Request.
Hi. I think most of you know me. I'm Denise Dorash for Reynolds. I'm the Director of the Frank Carlson Library. And I'm here today with members of the library board, including our Board President Laura Watson, who is going to join me at the podium in a minute. But I'm here primarily to tell you about our budget request. So last year, we asked for $186,644. And, um, there were many reasons given to us why that was not possible. But we're back again this year with the same request, $186,644 to fund the library so that we can operate at, um, at a rate and with a, to be able to serve the public the way we should be serving the public. We have employees, and this sounds like a broken record to many of you, I know, but we have employees who have been working there for years and years and years, and they are not even making $12 an hour. We would like to increase wages. That was the reason for the request last year, and that's the reason for the request this year. Now, having said that, it does look as if the personnel request on the budget is getting lower, and it is because you will not be paying me, or I should say the library board won't be paying me next year because I will be retiring at the end of August. So this is the last time I have to present the library budget to you. And next year, you're going to see a different face. With the personnel request, we have a benefit fund request, and that request is also a little lower. It is $62,374.60 as opposed to last year when we requested $67,351. Well, the reason for the decline in our request is because we know that benefits are determined by the salaries that are paid. If you pay more, you need to have more paid in for benefits. If you pay less, then you have less to have to pay out. We expect to see a reduction, probably the only one in the entire state of Kansas, in health insurance, simply because we expect that we will be paying less to ensure the person who is going to follow me. We also are going to probably see a decline in the amount we pay out in social security and in capers, simply because the person who will take my place hasn't been here for all these years and is starting at a lower wage than what I get. So I, I just feel like we would love to have full funding if that's possible. We know that that's not always your plan. We, we hope that you will support the library and continue to, to do so at the amount that we are requesting. We have made economies. We have done things to try to stay within the budget that you have authorized for us for 2022, and we're hoping that there will be some more revenue available for '23. Anyway, it has been wonderful to be able to come and talk to you year after year. I will miss seeing you, and it's this time. I have to stay here.
You have to stay here.
I thought I got to sit down.
No, you get, you have to stay here for one paragraph.
Okay, so I guess my turn is over.
Yeah. I'm Laura Watson, the current Frank Carlson Library Board President. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I promise to be brief. First, I would like to pay tribute to Denise Dorash for Reynolds for her nearly 40 years of service to the Frank Carlson Library and patrons and the community of Concordia. As you know, she will be retiring at the end of August, and we wish her a long and happy retirement. Denise has been the guiding force of the library for almost four decades. When she became the library director in 1983, the sum total of technology in the library was a telephone and a copy machine. Since then, Denise has transformed the library from card catalogs into a fully searchable digital resource that can be accessed from any device. She has overseen many building and maintenance projects, including landscaping, roof replacement, twice. You thought we'd be wrecked, okay? Twice, new carpet and the, and the complete renovation of the Frank Carlson Library. Even during the pandemic lockdown, she and her staff found ways to keep serving library patrons, providing curbside service, online programs, and internet hotspot access. Denise, on behalf of the Frank Carlson Library Board, I would like to publicly thank you for your hard work and dedication. I promise that with the help of the library staff and the new librarian, Concordia native Lindsay Cutsy, we will carry on your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am also here to exhort you to approve the proposed library budget. With the increase in prices and everything, including books, subscriptions, postage, gasoline, utilities, and technology, the library will need every penny to maintain current services. Also, the library staff members deserve raises. I looked it up on indeed.com last, yesterday, and the starting wage at Taco, at Taco John's is $12 an hour. The starting wage at shortstop as a cashier is $11 an hour, and we have library workers who are highly dedicated, who've been there for years, who still do not make $12 an hour. Okay, I know you, I'm repeating that, okay? Despite wage increases for library staff, our total budget request is the same as last year. In conclusion, the library is no longer just a building where books are stored and borrowed. Frank Carlson Library provides children's events, adult events, genealogy research, audiobooks, DVDs, and much-needed social interaction for many senior citizens in the community. It is a safe place for young people and a true bastion of democracy, where everyone is given equal service and equal access to information. One thing I've learned in the year I've been on the library board is that Denise and her staff have for years done much with little, and they have done it so quietly, like librarians, that many people don't realize all the services they provide. That is why I ask you to please approve this year's proposed library budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as we have questions, we'll free reach out to the board. Thank you guys. Moving on to the discussion agenda, Department of Justice Grant.
There's issues with me here this evening, so hopefully I can consider this information as well as if I could spend some time researching on different options for different equipment that could be used and purchased under the Department of Justice Grant that recall Senator Rank came to our community a couple of months ago just to announce that we've been awarded $310,000 specifically for PD communications. And credit has to be given to her for obtaining this grant, really. It started with a phone, with a conversation with one of our staffers several months prior to that, and talking about how we needed to upgrade the dispatch console system, how we need to upgrade the repeaters and the radios. And as with everything with government, it took a little bit of time, but we did eventually receive an award of $310,000. So what you'll see from the memo, and it's at your places here, it didn't end up in the packet, are different items listed, everything from replacement handheld radios, microphones, Bluetooth, microphones, car radios, body cameras. And the body cameras are something that we know that we are needing to replace. The ones that we have are coming out of warranty, and what we're finding, like, just as with the water meters, when things go out of warranty, they start to fail a little bit. Body cameras are absolutely imperative for our officers to have at all times. So this would be a good opportunity for us to be able to replace those now before they really start to fail en masse. Even, there's even a little bit of furniture and flooring for the dispatch on here, dispatch center. I don't know if you've had a chance to visit the dispatch center at all, but it is a need, a little bit of upgrading into reflective professionalism of the work that's done there. And then we also have $30,000 there for generators, and I might have to rely on you boss to help me out here, but there are three generators that help out with our repeaters throughout the county. And we did experience a failure of one or two of them. Go take that.
There's two repeaters at these services, plus the other one would be the Clonk Force Center for Dispatch. And the one out at the landfill which serves fire EMS and the county fire SO. During the last few lightning storms, the transfer switch is fried in it. So somebody has to manually go out and flip it. So if we don't know, we've lost power out there. We don't know when you go out there, flip it, tell the radios don't work. That's extremely dangerous for the officers out on patrol, and then we have troubles getting in people for calls.
So if we had to prioritize these purchases, the generator would probably be the first priority purchase as soon as we're, as soon as we begin receiving the money, and then we'll work through the rest of them. Again, as you said, nice job working through it with the staff, trying to figure out the best equipment for them to be able to make sure that our officers are well-equipped to be able to do their jobs. So we just wanted to share this with you this evening. No action to be taken, but did want to give you an opportunity to ask some questions. If you think that we're going in the wrong direction, we would appreciate some feedback. As with anything that we bring before you, if we find that we have to bid this stuff based on our current purchasing policy, we'll bring each one of those individual items back to you at another meeting before we purchase it to make sure that we have your authorization. But other than that, it's kind of a plan to use those funds. And I think we got pretty close to it, a little over $305,000 out of the $310,000 that was afforded.
So what are the yearly?
Oh, the yearly fees. So the voice recorder and LTE service, those, those are maintenance services with software interfaces that have to be, it's a subscription fee to make, be able to operate the equipment is what it amounts to.
So will that replace something that we already have?
Oh, yeah, all the stuff is replacement equipment for what we already have.
And like the subscriptions as well? So I mean, is that going to be a real increase in the budget of 7,000?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the equipment itself would be a replacement for what we already have, but the subscription fees, the annual fees would be an increase. We go into a different type of equipment, more modern, and a lot of stuff that's going to subscription-based or maybe cloud-based, and there's some kind of interface that has to happen with it. And Rick has planned for that within his budget, and we just recently turned that information to Amber so that it's going to reflect an increase to his operating budget to accommodate these. We're hopeful that it's possible we can get a portion of the first year of these fees included in the grant. We're still looking at that, see if that could happen, but beyond that, it will come out of the general fund budget.
Out of curiosity, with the annual fee combined, is that included in the voice recorder, the LTE? Is that something separate from that?
I think it is, I'm not sure.
And these are all things that, do you have to pre-approve any of them, any of these items?
We're, we're still working through that to make sure. Now, the grant application is due June 28th, so we're going to have to work very fast with curiosity. But so, so far, it looks like everything is, is good. Any other questions?
So these, say the annual fee is combined, is it one, if it's an annual?
It's every year. That's, that's what I'm not sure, if that is in with one of these other totals that's listed there. I'm not sure. I need to find that out, and I can get back to you on that.
I mean, and just my, my guess would be that it's, that it's included with the voice recorder, those are all have some sort of recording technology, and I would wonder if that's all in this, um, category. We can find that out.
Any other discussion? Well, then we will move on to our action agenda, reviewing the minutes of the June 1st, 2022 meeting. A motion by Commissioner Bellin, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the June 1st, 2022 meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number 11.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 11.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation ordinance number 11. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Sixth Street Parking Lot Construction Bid.
There are commissioners I might defer to Ken Johnson here on this item. Did a great job helping us out with the bids.
Evening. On June the 10th, we had a bid letting for the concrete parking lot that's west of Brown Grand. And there were two bidders, Pro-Con Construction from Hutchinson and Orwiet Street Scape, who did our alley project for, from Raytown, Missouri. The base bid with alternate one, and what alternate one is, was the design of a 24-inch gutter on the west side of the parking lot. So all the water from the church doesn't end up dragging gravel into your parking lot that carry it all out, dump it in your street. Hopefully not. The idea was to keep it off your parking lot. So, so I'm going to just read the base bid with the alternate, because we think the alternate is necessary to have. So Pro-Con was $273,125. Orwiet was $210,670. And the engineer's estimate was $190,090. So you can see that over the engineer's estimate. So let me talk to that a little bit. Primarily, the increase is due to the change of the lighting for the parking lot. We had originally planned for four lights, 25 feet tall, with dual luminaries on them, which would lit the whole parking lot, probably even the one to the west of the church. But because there was a suggestion that we bring them down, make them more like period lights from what the Brown Grand was, with a globe on the top, flooded holes, that's specialty lights. And it takes more lights to do that because they're not high enough to cast more light. So the, we're over the estimate primarily because of those item changes. So, um, looking at the bids, and just for your information, you probably have a bid tab sheet, but the bids for the lighting were $75,000 for all of them on one and almost $50,000 on the other. We had originally $24,000 in light. But that's the difference between a normal street light that's way up in the air, luminaries that come out both sides, and the light that goes up about 12, 14 feet tall and has a bulb on it. You have to have more lights to get more candle flicker on the parking lot. Now, I've been through the bids, and everybody's bid for the first time in 10 years. Everybody's bid was a wreck down to the penny. Now, I don't know whether somebody got better math or what the deal was. But I was surprised. We usually find typo errors, you know, somebody transposes the number, you know, that type of thing. And we have a, a ruling for that, that the, the unit price always governs. So if the extension for something that was five, $5,000 items, and the extension was $30,000, that wouldn't hold. The five, 5,000 or 25,000 would be the true number. And that's sometimes where we get, somebody's thinking one thing and writing another thing. So we did that almost 40 years ago so that the unit price always governs, not the extensions. And then if they refuse to accept, then we reject their bid entirely. Most of them are free. With Orwiet being the low bidder, and even if it's over the engineer's estimate, I would recommend that we go with Orwiet Street Scape to do the work. I have two reasons for that. One is we've seen their work. The second is their concrete crew is right now finishing a job and wanting to move to another job immediately. In fact, they'd be here next week if we'd allow them. Which would then get us real close to being done by fall back. Now, I talked to the contractor today, and he tells me they're telling him 12 weeks to get the lights as soon as they can order, and he's not going to order until you guys make a decision. So 12 weeks puts us right in the, the week or two right before the fall test if they hold. So my experience this year is none of those tapes hold. We haven't had one come in within three weeks of the date they said. It's just terrible to get stuff. But we'll build the bases, we'll have the, the electrical wire run up to the bases and all that. I have news, but the pole and light on. He'll have a parking lot. We may not have built headlights. That's my recommendation.
And Mayor Christian, we talked about funding this parking lot through the TIP fund. So with the overage, this would deplete the TIP fund, and then we'd be a little over $14,000 over for the amount that's in the TIP fund, so we would need to pull that from CIP, which, which we do have available as a result of the earlier delinquent project. So we do have that available, and I would, I would like to see us go forward. If you're concerned about the light fixtures being over, we could go back and change orders out, but that was a request of the Brown Grand Board to try to help your base that you have in that area. We got as well. We did add, we did change it from four to six because that allowed us to achieve the minimum standard one-foot candle required for parking lots.
Yeah, the higher up you go, the higher white you use, the more you cover the part.
We did give up, I think Officer Vickers took some photos for me at night, and I got over there early in the morning and able to look at some of the perimeter lighting, and I think we'll be pretty well covered. I think we'll be pleased with the amount of light that's on that parking lot.
So not that anyone would ever do this, but with snowplows flowing through there.
Concrete that's on the ground with brick around it.
Yeah.
You'll have to hit that for them.
And to jump up, okay.
Not that anybody will do it.
Not that, yeah.
And there will be no curb inside the parking lot or against the brown grand. It'll all be matched to each other. The only curb will be on the west side. So you can plow to your heart's content.
Part of this road, some curb, the sidewalk along Sixth Street.
And the curb gutter in front of it.
I move to approve a bid from Orwiet Street Scape for the base bid and the alternate number one for $210,670 to be paid from the TIP fund and CIP and authorized the city manager to decide the contract.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Bellin. Is there any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
He told me today to call him as soon as I left the meeting. So he can order white. Come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Broadway Plaza Management Agreements.
Mayor Christian, we're coming upon time for renewal of the Broadway Plaza Management Agreement. The Plaza's been in business now, I guess, for about five years, so we're getting kind of used to what events we can have there and how it's done. Clonk Force did a great job managing for us the last several years. And this last year was, was really, really pretty good. Nikki did a great job, so I'm really pleased to see that. Um, with her recent announcement and move into Economic Development Director, they have a temporary person serving as Plaza Coordinator, and that is going to go on to some student teaching here in August. And so we wanted to offer the, offer Clonk Force an opportunity that if they wanted some help with the Plaza, to be able to move to a month-to-month management agreement, which would allow them to say, hey, if we can't find somebody, we know the labor market is kind of tight in hiring. It would allow them to more easily say, hey, city, we can't fill this position. We need some assistance with it. And to be able to back out of the agreement. So that's the reason for this offer. One of the changes includes two to the, oh, it's, to the management fee. The overall annual fee would stay the same at $15,000, but we would match the monthly payments instead of annual payments. And that way, cash flow could keep going through the Plaza to pay each Friday month. Uh, we did update the nondiscrimination clause, and that has changed a little bit in the last five years. And then in Section 11, we removed a statement about the Plaza being a new undertaking. And then we modified the assignment clause in Section 12. And, and the reason for that was, the way that it was reading to me was that the, right now, Clonk Force is responsible for management of the Plaza. They get to decide who rents the Plaza, they get to decide the terms, the hours of operation, everything, which we really appreciate them doing. The way that that section had read with assignment, it read to me that they could also allow the groups that they rent to, to set those hours and make those rules. And so we just deleted that segment out, and I clarified that a little bit more. So the recommended staff action, I guess, after talking to Justin, because we've made so many major changes to the term and to the cost, or how it's paid. Justin had recommended that we terminate the existing agreement and then enter into a new agreement with, with Clonk Force with those changes. The original agreement already has one addendum that was done in 2019, and that changed the presentation for the annual report. And I think changed the payment date, I think, too, possibly, but definitely the, the date for the report. So to clean everything up, we're just terminating and then into a new agreement. And so that's staff recommendations from when terminate that agreement and then enter into an agreement right away that would only change to monthly and keep all amounts the same. Again, we've been really happy with, with the service that Clonk Force provided. Appreciate the support of the Plaza Committee again, and look forward to, 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 to new partnership there. Nikki Reed of Clonk Force is here. She did have to obtain the visit with the Clonk Force Executive Board last night. I'd like you to.
Yes, and Lucas is also here, and he is our board president. But we do appreciate your concern as for economic development to be first and the Plaza to be second. But we are confident that we could keep an annual and not do a monthly, and that we will be able to keep that position filled. The board does not want to go to a monthly, and that's why we're here tonight to visit about that. And Amy and I had discussed that, what day was that, that we met in the office?
The night plus Thursday.
That I was going to take it to the executive board for the final decision. And the final decision last night was, we would like to keep the month, or the annual. We do not want to go to a monthly. I expressed to Amy today that the Broadway Plaza position in the five years that it's been managed has not been left vacant. It's always been filled. So when the economic development position was open, I was in filling the Broadway Plaza. And then as soon as I was announced, two days later, I had staff in there filling that position. And currently, I have six people that have inquired. I have three applicants in hand, two more that are discussing. I have three applicants in hand, two more that are discussing it. Another one that I had emailed today, I'm very confident that before Maddie goes back to school, that we're going to have it filled. I'm very confident that Maddie will probably be able to help train that person the way that Jessica also helped me. Another thing that we mentioned was that the board wanted me to express that they feel like it's difficult for Codcorp to plan and staff accordingly. If limited to a monthly plan. So that's kind of where we stand. Lucas, did you have anything else or thoughts off of that?
I think one thing we did talk about last night was the fact that so many of the, the planning is done so far ahead. You're in the middle of things. So a monthly contract makes it harder to envision. You think, well, maybe I'm not gonna be doing this the next month. And I think that was another reason.
You certainly can switch it to an annual if you, when you've got someone in place. If, you know, to kind of.
But someone is in place.
A second, just a second. Because that's, I think, kind of why you could do a month-to-month. So I know there's someone in place right now, we're talking about permanently. Or not permanently, but full-time, you could always, when that person's brought in, if they didn't need our assistance, they can go here. I think that was probably what people were thinking. So that's, I'm not, I guess I don't understand the reasoning, but it certainly can change.
No, I don't think, did we talk about that, Amy, that say in July? And, and maybe you did bring it up and I don't remember, but I don't remember the two of us talking about what he just said. As far as, okay, well, right now we're gonna sign a monthly, but then when you get someone hired, we can go back to an annual. I don't remember that we've discussed that.
No, we, we didn't. We, we talked about just the monthly and how, how the.
I'm just saying that's a potential option. Nikki, I'm not blocking it.
I'm just trying to understand.
What I'm trying to explain is we have options. It's, they're not blocking you month-to-month for it.
And it is, the Broadway Plaza takes a lot more time than what I think. And we haven't ever asked for more than the fifteen thousand in the five years. It takes a lot more time. And I used to tell Kim that when I started that position, I said, this is very time-consuming. It's not just a May through September job. October, there's still high school events. It's, it's still pretty busy in October and then you get into November and you're starting to plan the holidays and getting the tree and taking care of it. Then the next thing you know, you're writing handwritten letters to children that are dropping letters. And then in January and February, you're starting to make your plans for your concerts and your movies and the schedule for the next. And then you're writing your grant. And so it's, it's a very time-consuming position.
So my, my thought is that the, the primary function in my, from my perspective of Codcorp is, is of economic development. I think that as long as that position is filled, that there shouldn't be any disruption to the performance of that task. The primary benefit that I see in, in modifying this agreement that we have is to allow for a very seamless transition. If, if, if the worst-case scenario comes in is that as, even though we have, it sounds like viable candidates for that position. If there comes a time where that's not the case, then we have, we have a, a support system in place. That doesn't place a greater burden on the director of Codcorp, whose primary function is of economic development. As much as we enjoy the plaza and as much of, of addition to our community as it is. I think that, that we need Codcorp to function first and foremost as economic development and having a secondary role being Plaza Coordinator. None of which changes with, with modifying the term. That there's, or the, not the term per se, but the, the arrangement of the month-to-month, that that's, that's simply in place. To engage a transition if, if necessary, that hypothetically doesn't ever have to get engaged, right? It's, it's a, it's a, a safety net that in theory would never be employed, right? But that if it's there, we don't have to come in at that point to transition the responsibilities over while we wait for the hire of that potential position. So from the outside looking in, nothing changes. From, from the inside mechanics, there's an ability to transition on the fly in a way that allows the performance of that job to continue on. Whether there's someone in that position in Codcorp or not. So I don't, I wasn't. I'm not sure exactly what some of the concerns were, but I don't, I don't think that this necessarily threatens that position. I can appreciate the concern that, that the executive board might have, but I don't, I don't anticipate that being really a compromised position. As long as, as long as there's someone there, we understand the value of supporting that position. But if there's not, then we can take that responsibility on and allow the, the director, allow you to continue functioning in that, that primary economic development portion. So I don't know that the planning would be disrupted. I don't, the fact that we're in mid-season, I don't think that that has to change any planning. We're not just planning for the month. That position can still plan annually, right? But if there's not somebody in that position, then we need to have those functions continue on. And that's not something that I think that the, that executive director should be burdened with or, or have time taken away. Because I think the Concordia's been doing a lot of really great things. I think we've got a lot of good attention that's coming our way. And so I really, from a, from a citizen perspective, from a commissioner perspective, I really want that executive director position to be. On the forefront of, of, I think, frankly, more important tasks on the bigger picture.
Are there any consideration for semi-annual or quarterly rather than monthly term?
So what, I mean, I think that there's consideration, that from my perspective, there'd be consideration for anything, but I don't know that that, what that. What that does for Codcorp then is, is it secures that position's funding on a more regular basis. But what it also does is it limits, I think, the primary function of this modification, which is being able to pivot more acutely, right? So, so I think that it, it would provide greater security, which shouldn't be as necessary. If I, if I'm thinking about the necessity of providing greater financial security to Codcorp. Or the benefit of being able to pivot more acutely, to me, that, that necessity is, is gonna be more advantageous than the other. Because theoretically, we should never need to use it. So the funding should continue on on an annual basis. But if we need to pivot, we could do it very sharply, very quickly, without there being much disruption to the, the function of that position. Right? I mean, that's, that's how I'm thinking about it anyways, that we don't really achieve what we're trying to achieve, I'm moving it to a quarterly, semi-annual or an annual basis. And if we're gonna do that, we should just keep it annual. But if we're gonna make it to where we can pivot more abruptly, if necessary, then, then we would need it to have that function.
I was just looking, thinking more like when we talked about the continuity, having a little longer period than month-to-month, just for continuation purposes.
And, and the agreement would automatically continue to roll over every month. We don't have to come back here every month and sign a new agreement. It automatically rolls over. It would, it would just be in, in the event that you guys said, we can't handle this, Nikki's gotta focus on economic development, there's nobody in that position. We need some help. That would be the only time that it would change.
So I guess, what, what's the concern about continuity?
Just knowing that we have the, that we have the term fixed for a little longer period of time. Cause we feel like we will not have any difficulties in keeping that continuity. So just to, you know, just to have, I know you said it's more or less a safety net, but you know, there's also that possibility that it could be month, you know, if they ended in a month. So we would just like to, I guess, have the peace of mind that there will be some continuity, at least for a little longer term. You know, the, the, the events take place generally in a roughly six-month period. So we're thinking either, you know, to, to make the, the term match that seasonal period or even quarterly. If, like you said, to facilitate a faster pivot opportunity.
I'm, I'm feeling like I don't really understand what this issue is all about. But as I recall, when we initiated this contract. The assistant was part-time. And this allowed the assistant to go to full-time, correct?
I don't personally know what, was it, was it?
Yeah, no, no, so there was a full-time position for admin assistant. It was to, I guess, further enhance a job. And so allowed for a salary increase, of course, with this. So it's, I mean, it's also important to keep in mind that the other job is also funded in part by the city. So it's not like it's, you know, a position that's solely just fifteen thousand dollars. It's also funded in part by contributions, Cloud County and the city.
Well, and I'm looking at that original, and I can't see why. I'm having a little trouble understanding why we need to go to monthly. Because it says you can modify or terminate it by mutual agreement of the parties. So you can do that anytime.
Yeah, but that has to be mutual. I think that's part of our problem is that this is either mutual right now. So you're gonna, both parties have to agree to terminate it. So if we couldn't fill that, if they couldn't fill that and we're on that yearly and.
And all we have to do is tell you and we have to agree to that.
No, they don't have to. It has to be mutual. So they, we, we could go to them and say, hey, we want to terminate this. We want to amend this because it's, you're not, you haven't filled that position. And they could say, no. That's mutual, so.
But wouldn't that be the same thing on the thirty day though, right, Justin? It's supposed to be mutual on a monthly or?
Oh, like if we went on this contract.
And one party could say no even on a monthly. Is that right?
No, I, I scrolled too far. I'm trying to.
Until terminated by either party by notice given, not less than thirty days or until modified or terminated by the mutual agreement of parties. So it, that decision can be made by, the city can create this, decision can be made by Codcorp.
Okay. To terminate, I think Nikki's question is tonight, yes, it would have to be an agreement by both to move forward with the contract. She was asking about this.
Oh, yeah, this one, yeah. I mean, when, when it kind of comes out, it sounds like they've already said no. So you've come back essentially with your counter, which would say we want it year-to-year. So if we said, no, we want month-to-month.
Or quarterly or, right, quarterly or semi-annually? Open to that? It, yeah, everything's possible.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends. You've got a little bit more security there than you do with the year-to-years, looking at it from your guys' standpoint of it. Not as much as a month-to-month per se. But, uh, I mean, yeah, you could. And then essentially what we do in that is if you guys made that decision, then you essentially vote to send that to them for their approval. And if they don't approve that and come back, we're kind of at an impasse. You guys have to figure out what you wanna do. So.
Personally, I think you're making more out of it than.
No, not at all. That's, that's, that's what you have to do. If we decided to do it semi-annually, it has to go back to them to approve. But I'm not making more out of any of it. That's how it works.
You can still give notice, third to get notice.
I don't, I, I think we're talking about two different things. I'm, I'm talking about if we decided to do something different. We, it has to go back to them to approve. So if we were ma, if we were saying we want to terminate this and make this semi-annually or quarterly as opposed to the year-to-year. We have to then make that essentially what we're sending to them for them to, okay, see what I'm saying? So. Cause if they said they don't wanna do the month-to-month, yeah.
Lucas, are you, are you, would you be fairly certain that that quarterly or semi-annually would be something that would be met with approval?
No, I'd have to talk to the rest of the committee.
They're pretty solid.
Yeah, we did, we did, I think it was brought up just briefly, but not really discussed. It was the discussion that we had was more based on if we wanna do month-to-month or if we wanna stick with our traditional year. They decided we wanted this to be a year, did not want it to be month-to-month, but we didn't have any extended discussion on any other type of term. So we have to find out that.
This is current contract, effective July first.
This one will end, end of June, right? The current. I have the current one.
We've got it, blue lined on here. We're redlined, so you can see what it used to be and then the proposed changes are.
I would say as well, there'll have to be, just that I'm noticing some additional changes by law that will have to. Be anti-discrimination and it's only because a lot of us haven't updated those over the years. The part where we can't discriminate on the basis of race, religion, color. When Kelly came in as governor, she made sexual preference and gender identity protected classes as well, and also protected classes federally. So that'll be something I'm gonna know if we have to add it, just so they work in line with those laws as well.
So those wouldn't, that's, wouldn't be encompassed under just gender?
No, they make us list those individually now.
Well, I was, I was trying to say words.
No, I know, but I appreciate that, yeah.
So that would, you're basically saying that would be one more adjustment that needs to be.
We have to, yeah. Yeah, you have to. It, it used to be in Kansas, we didn't necessarily have to list those. Brownback did not have those as protected classes. When Governor Kelly came in, she did make them protected classes, so they have to be included. Yep.
Does this warrant more discussion or?
If no action is taken, period. The contract automatically ends July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Right, I think June, right.
But it, but it automatically rolls over. So it, it, it'll automatically renew in its original form on July first, if no action is taken. So you could, you could choose to take no action at all. You could choose to. What is that word? I'm struggling with it.
Cable?
No, um, vote against the recommendation, I guess, and, and modify the, the motion to say leave it as it is. Where you could vote in favor of the motion as it is or you could modify it.
But we also do the other changes. And then we have to go back.
Yeah. When's your guys' next meeting or when do you guys get together?
Well, we decided that it was maybe last night and our next forward is going to be September. But executive will meet again in August. Or July, yeah, we meet once a month, sorry.
You're gonna need to, yeah.
Yeah, and we can call maybe, yes. That can happen. It's not, we can call one.
Look, I understand the necessity, especially when you're hiring someone new, to make sure that some of that funding's in place, especially for the planning period. I would be available of looking at doing six months at this time and then revisiting that at six if this group ends.
That's cool. Good. So, so what happens though if these applicants don't work out as well as we hope? We don't find that, what, is that gonna fall back to you? Is that gonna be something?
There's a lot of what ifs every, with every position and any job with the great resignation that's going on. The great part that I've talked to Amy, and I know that my board knows, is I ran that place and I had a great year. I understand you want me to continue to focus on economic development, but right now I'm training the person that's in there. And I'm going to be providing the training for the next person that comes in, if they don't get in before Maddie leaves. But I believe that they will. But everything's uncertain.
Yeah, it just, the difference is, is this is our, our Broadway Plaza. This is our events place and so it's, it's very important to this organization to ensure that.
I completely get it.
And I think, and thought about really before, but hiring somebody would be nice to know that they had at least six months. they had at least six months.
I would like at least a year.
But on the, the, the flip side of it, though, is that with, with the fifty-five thousand or the seventy thousand dollars that the city contributes to Cloud Core, and it's in Cloud Core funding and in this position's funding, that that money is going to be utilized to the, to the greatest extent possible, which is compromised if you're doing that job on your own, right? The, the, the funding for Cloud Core is compromised because you're spread thin. Um, not doubting your capabilities, and honestly, it's not even so much you, Nikki, or Maddie, or whoever might be hired in this position, but rather the, the, the structure of it as a whole. And I think that's sometimes where we can get, get kind of caught up, is that it feels like maybe I chuck and doubting you, Nikki, when it's not at all the case. It's, it's recognizing that hiring has been a significant issue in our recent, very recent history. And, and with the money that we're funding Cloud Core, that we need to know that that money is being utilized the best that it's, it's capable of being. And if that position's compromised, it's, it's, it's hard to argue that that money is being, and then it allows us to take that money back to fund towards being able to do that with, within staff that we have that, that are on hand. So it's, and again, hopefully, it's, it's a non-issue, that, that in theory, this never has to be engaged, and there's no compromise to the position, there's no, no compromise to the planning, there's no compromise to the budget. It's only at such time where there is a compromise that this does get engaged.
It is the first time in five years, I think, that there was just a period of time where only one person was in the office, if I'm right, since Broadway Plaza has started. So one time and it lasted just a few weeks, but.
So because there was a first time, it brought something to our attention that we needed to address so that there, there were supports in place if it happened a second time. And again, there may never be a second time, at which case everything keeps rolling the way that it, it rolls, that there's not a disruption from, from an external perspective. If there does happen to be, because I think that the reality is, in the last twenty-four months, almost every organization that I'm aware of is having to deal with things for the first time that they'd never had to deal with before. And so I think trying to be proactive and putting systems and contracts in place that safeguard all parties is something that we're all having to take another look at, to make sure that if something does happen, that we have, we have the structures in place that can support it on a pretty quick basis.
And the great part that I will speak of in that timeframe, that I was in the admin assistant Broadway Plaza position, how many people that were on my board and on my committee would say, let me know if you need anything. There are always a lot of people that are not paid to come in and say, hey, let us know if you need some help. And that's the great part that I can confirm happened in that few months timeframe.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, we're, we're having a conversation about two sides of the same coin. The, the hope is that none of this matters, right? We, we have a good history of, of working together. We have a good history of people stepping up and stepping in. So the, the positive side for this is that none of this matters. But that's generally not why contracts are in place. Contracts are generally in place in case something does, at which point we have an ability to do things in a way that minimizes the potential disruption to what has been a fairly significant dinner bell for our community. Right? So I think that it's, it's, it's not about whether things aren't going well. It's, it's, it's having something in place in case it doesn't. Which isn't to say that there hasn't been significant success that you personally, or that that office hasn't had. And, and I worry that that's, that's where the majority of this conversation is taking place, is about the, the insecurity, um, of, of maintaining the funding for this. And I don't, that's not the point. That's not the point.
I'm just representing what the conversation was last night.
Sure, no, I.
And we had six execs there of the seven that participated in that meeting last night.
Well, um, are there any modifications to what we have in front of us that we want to consider or?
I, I want to go into this with, with, with partnership, but from my understanding, then Cloud Core as a board is not willing, or is not in a position to sign any agreement other than of the general, general, uh, same terms. I mean, we can modify the specific, non, non-discrimination language, but everything else, that's, that's what Cloud Core is supporting from their, from your position, right? Like, no changes other than regulatory language. And any, any potential modification with warrant, further discussion from the executive board, right?
That's how I feel.
So not open to any negotiation? That's what you're confirming?
At this.
The email conversation as well today, I just feel like they really want to stick with the annual, but I feel like what you suggested would have to be more discussion, like you just said.
That's the decision at this point. We have to reconvene and discuss other options, if there were, if other options were possible. So, so hypothetically, then, so at this point, I would probably, uh, move to take no action because we're not in a position to sign this contract. I mean, we can, we can vote, support this contract, which Cloud Core doesn't have to sign, at which point it continues on as it is anyway. So instead of that, to, uh, so the contract then is going to be signed, which is gonna put it into an automatic renewal, at which point we'll have to serve notice of any modifications down the road anyway, right?
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, because it can be, if I'm, so this is the original, just blue lined.
In black is the original.
So until terminated by either party. So technically, I mean.
With notice.
Yeah, we can give you guys thirty days notice, you know? I think the unfortunate thing is, and maybe this is the elephant in the room, is if we can't come to terms, you guys aren't funded, that position's not funded. So I think there needs to be some, we, the board needs to not say this, it's an all or nothing. If we're really compromised, you see what I'm saying? I, I think that's what we need to kind of look is cooperate.
So to be fair, I think that there's. Funding for a lot of, the Broadway Club, for the mayor, cease.
Yeah.
But we still would fund the position, obviously, I actually mentioned.
But.
Right, just, just, I think you have, any, any discussion for, for compromise that would need to be discussed by the executive board, which I respect. I appreciate that. Um, we're offering a suggestion, which the executive board would at least need to have a discussion, be able to meet with. So I, I don't think that that's off the table just tonight, as it is. There, there's not agreeing to the month to month. And since they're not agreeing to that, then the contract would have to continue on as is, because it's not being mutually agreed upon. So.
Until terminated by either party.
Right, so we're not, but that would even still be with notice. So we're really not. I would rather, I guess, let it continue, see if we can come to a compromise, and then we can terminate the agreement with an immediate signing of an agreement with agreeable terms. Right? I mean, that's, that's essentially the vote we're in anyway. So we might as well let it continue to be that, see if we can work towards an agreement as to whether it's, it's a quarterly or semi-annual. Again, remembering that the primary focus is being able to pivot in an acute basis, so that we can figure out how to do this together. Right? Because again, we want to, I mean, to just, I think that's my, my frustration is I think we're, we're focusing on the wrong elements of this conversation. It's, it's not about not continuing to support this, it's making sure this support continues. And I worry that the Cloud Core Executive Board is not maybe experiencing it as that. But that's the, that's the intent, is to maintain support of Broadway Plaza, period, regardless of who's conducting it. Right? One of the things I say as a therapist is it's, it's much more important for me that somebody's meeting with somebody than it is for that person to be meeting with me. Right? I don't necessarily care who you meet with. It's just important that you meet with somebody. And that's kind of how I feel about the Broadway Plaza. I don't necessarily care who's maintaining it. I just want to make sure that there's someone maintaining it. And, and somebody is right now, and that's remarkable. And that's fantastic. I don't know that we can bank that on an annual basis without compromising what is a more important goal, which is economic development for Concordia and Cloud County and the whole. So that's, that's where I'm coming from, is maintaining the security of the position, maintaining security, the support of, of the plaza, and supporting it. That's what I want to achieve. And I, and I think that this contract helps achieve that. But it's being experienced as, as a lack of faith or an insecurity within Cloud Core, and that's not, that's not a intent, but.
But we did have an email discussion today, Justin, about that possibility, what you just brought.
I wasn't threatening anybody. I, I think maybe that was taken the wrong way. I just wanted everybody to understand, like, we can't come to terms in the contracts.
And we.
Cooperation.
Had that in an email discussion.
Sure, okay. Well, it's just looking at the contract, I wonder, no, that's ultimately what could happen.
Right. And we, I did have that in my, in my work today.
I, and I figured, I mean, they understand that too, so.
So, so with that, then, I'm, I'm gonna move to terminate the existing Broadway Plaza management agreement and approve and authorize mayor to sign the new management agreement with Cloud Core effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, recognizing that that's probably not going to get much support, so that we can not take action.
So if the Cloud Core Board is not accepted, then the first of July, they'll stop managing the place.
No, it'll continue, the, the agreement will continue on because it hasn't been agreed, it hasn't been mutually agreed upon. So if, if I make this motion and it doesn't pass, then the contract continues on automatically.
As is.
My, my purpose in making this motion is to.
Devoting.
Okay, because if you do, and it is accepted, then we're now terminating it, and they're not gonna sign it, is essentially what I.
Either way, either, either, either the motion doesn't pass and the contract continues, or the motion passes, and it's not accepted by Cloud Core and the contract continues.
Or the motion dies for lack of a second.
Yeah, the, the motion hasn't even been seconded, you know?
Right, I'm just saying, like, to get action moving, so we're not gonna take action.
If, if, if you made the mo-, if you made the motion to terminate the contract and have Amy sign the new one, which is this month to month, and they fa-, they refuse to sign it, then the, all the contracts are out. Because, yeah, it, because it can be terminated by either party by notice. And number two.
By notice.
We're giving them notice. That, that's, that's notice essentially, is saying, we're gonna, we wanna, we wanna cancel this.
Only if the motion passes.
If it passes.
Yes, but I, I thought you said if it passes and they don't sign it, it still goes to the year to year. It doesn't. That contract's not canceled.
Right, right.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, maybe I misunderstood.
No, I probably didn't say it as clearly as I would have liked to.
I just wanted us, everybody to know what we're going to do. So there would still be the option for Cloud Core to sign it.
And then it would even do agree, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
If the motion passes.
Yes, because we'd essentially be giving you an offer and you could accept the offer and all, right?
So what happens if the motion dies for lack of a second? You have a motion on the floor right now.
If the motion dies, then the contract essentially is not, I mean, it would, it would go.
From the existing contract.
Just, yeah, the existing contract would just continue until it was terminated with thirty days, no, because.
So it would continue. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lambert. Seeing the seconds, that's motion, but moving on to the agreement for Doane Field per project.
The last time I was chair, we've done a lot of groundwork, especially talking with contractors, talked to three main contractors in that area of called Midwest, that's what it, have the most field on the ground and baseball-specific turf. Before you use the three quotes from those three contractors, they all understand contract, what we did to quote. But Eric and I feel that Mid-America Sports Construction, they have the most actual turf as their turf, and they've been around since the beginning. They were the first ones. They have the most field on the ground and the most reputable. They had came down in their quote and quite a bit, and the way they compare to the others, we feel like they're the best option to go with. So this will be a request for the, allow the city manager to sign a contract contingent on the outstanding, outstanding grant application we have right now with Dane G. Hanson, and any private funds secure. This would still only tie the city to the previously agreed upon fifty thousand contribution. So if, you know, worst-case scenario, Dane D. didn't finish up the application or the, the amount, I mean, and the college cannot secure the other funding, then we don't sign the contract. But with their timeline, especially with any of them, timelines are getting pretty tight, contractors, um, to really ensure that it's gonna be done this fall, um, and with the skip week and commission meetings coming up, by end of June is the priority to sign the contract, so.
So with the additions, it's gonna cost twenty-two thousand dollars roughly more than the lowest bid?
Roughly. And, I mean, we've been on their products, um, quite frankly, feel the asphalt turf is still a better quality product.
So the, the product that you would get from Mid-America is superior to the Sprinter, where they're including all of these other things? I have a question. What about the drainage of that field is the, the system, our systems, can they take all that extra water?
A majority of that infill already drains back behind home plate where we have in-ground drains, that's where all that storming off. So there's four pits in that whole pot place. So all those four pits tie into the one that goes directly underneath going to fill already, and I mean, as much as washout, rock and dirt and stuff that's already in there, but all that falls to there and goes straight through the center of point field, out to center field to the main drain. So them tying in the infill to that drain would be a problem. And like the flat pipe drain system, it became an add-on, and the best way to describe that coming from the rep is if you get a six-inch rain on that turf without the flat pipe drain system, it might pool for a couple minutes, definitely, before it filters out. Um, so that was one of the add-ons that for four thousand dollars in the full scope of the project, not that much, but keeps you from have a little bit of cooling, we're not gonna be playing through many six-inch rains anyway, so a couple minutes, it doesn't matter, but. It's a, there's that quality, that's quality that we're gonna get too, so.
So of those three, then that is the best quality?
That's what we feel.
That's the one that's going to last just the longest?
I mean, D-one fields, um, they're in the pro business with turf, um, pro baseball, um, colleges, all the way down to June College and High School fields. Spread turf does have a lot, a lot of rec facilities. Um, they are getting some Juco fields. Um, they probably have the second most. Mammoth is just getting into the baseball specific, um, but they just signed big-time D-one contracts too, here recently, but we were surprised that they came in so high, honestly.
But Mammoth?
Yeah, Mammoth. They added a lot of contingencies that they were basically estimating really high on their products and time and their costs, but they were so far above the other ones, we felt it wasn't.
But everything else is included with the Mammoth?
Yeah, but still, you're at five hundred and almost five hundred and ninety thousand. I mean.
Oh, that's a five. I'm sorry.
I wasn't gonna make fun of your math or anything.
I'm sorry. I saw three.
And Eric's been on both the Mammoth field. And Eric's been on both Mammoth Field, which proposed as long as. The high school just east of Manhattan, Rock Creek, Rock Creek just put there in, and there's the closest on-ground field. To our general area that they've done. And the quality and type of product that they actually use through a post AstroTurf as well, but it's just their. Version of it.
Before we do this, we need to, I'm just gonna continue apparently to be a pain tonight, but since we've got a twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollar difference. We have to, you know, by law, you have to accept the lowest, most responsive bid. So you need to articulate why the Mid-America Sports Construction. Bid is more of a responsible bid than Sprint Turf. I just want that on the record so that we're not looking like we're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Does it make a difference if these were already, if, if all these guys had already gone through the. Bidding process of being on a state contract and we're just comparing quotes?
That. It, it can. It depends. So like, is Sprint Turf. You had mentioned that they're kind of into, to the Juco fields. What, I guess, what's the difference between the two?
War Rec. Or Collegiate and V1, more V1, just starting out.
Okay.
So this, this, that's our bill more since we're.
Okay. What about the product, the actual product, the quality of the product? We have to, we really gotta make sure we can have our feet held in fire on this.
The Sprint Turf is a little bit of a lighter. Quality of actual physical turf.
Okay. That, that's where we need to go here. So it, it may not hold up as well?
Longevity. Longevity with our fields, we don't have as many games as Manhattan Complex. So our longevity lasts a little bit longer no matter what we put in it. But that, when you put that much repetition on it, yes, it wouldn't last. Quite as much. Looking at it and being on it, it's a thinner type of turf. Without, I would adjust its durability if you would.
Okay. What about the bonding? How is, is the bonding that Mid-America would provide better than the Sprinter?
That's.
Oh, a bid bond. I'm thinking bonding like they're gluing it down. You got fives and threes. I think bonding is glue. I'll show myself out.
Doesn't have the last.
Yeah, and that's where I was getting to too. So it doesn't include the batter's and catcher's panels, correct? Okay.
And that's roughly thirty-four, that is thirty-four panels, because it's left for finger batter's box, right for finger batter's box, catcher's box, and the mound.
So what we're saying is then is that Mid-America Sports Construction is more of a responsible bid because they are gonna provide us a better product. A thicker product that will uphold better. And they are also including more in their bid than what Sprint Turf was going to include, which is those panels. Okay. That's good. I think we're good there.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Mid-America Sports Construction for the Doian Field Turf Project. With a base bid of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, all those numbers, plus add-ons.
Don't forget glue.
Yeah. Contingent upon secured funds from the Dane G. Hanson Foundation and other secured private donations. Sufficient to cover the project cost and to approve a ten percent contingency allowance for any future adjustments within the scope of the project.
Second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Belvin. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Airport Advisory Board appointments.
So the airport advisory board has two positions that are coming open on July first. One of them being Brian Donovan's and one of them being Mike Holmes. Mike Holmes has decided to retire after thirty years on the airport advisory board. There's only been two expressions of interest. One being Brian Donovan, who is our current fixed base operator at the airport and has been based out of Loser for almost four years. The other being Michael Owens, who is looking for a way to get more involved in the community. Steve Richards, the chairman of the airport advisory board, has said, since there's only two expressions of interest, that no recommendations were necessary. The recommended action is to appoint Brian Donovan to the airport advisory board and appoint Michael Owens to the airport advisory board.
I move to appoint Brian Donovan and Michael Owens to the airport advisory board and thank. Mike Holmes for his thirty years of service.
So second. A motion by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Lambert to appoint Brian Donovan and Michael Owens to the airport advisory board, but thank you to Michael. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passes. Not me, not nay. Thanks. Moving on to demolition program application, five oh two West Second Street.
Mayor Commissioners, I have to call Judge for two addresses in the memo, but we'll deal with five oh two. West Second Street has been on my list for a long time and it's just been applied to be in the demo program. As you can see from our report, it does qualify. And you can see from the contract numbers that. They're refunding the twenty-six point five back to based on the lowest bid from. Deal Enterprises. I waived it. In these cases, I waived the time search fee because it was bought sheriff sale. All leans and stuff for Brian Donovan when they, when they sell a sheriff sale. Anyway, the recommendation would be to accept that in the demo program. Based on the lowest bid from Dalton, Gozer.
Snyder.
Dalton Snyder.
Dalton Snyder, yeah. Dalton, he's got like three companies, that family has like three companies. I get them all mixed up. Dalton Doge Services or something. Snyder Doge.
I move to accept the application for four oh two West Second into the demo program and authorize the city manager. To sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Snyder Gozy.
Five oh two to West A.
Oh, yes, it is five oh two.
Motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Lambert. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Board of Building Trades appointments.
Well, we're good and Jane Reynolds' position on the board are up for renewal again. We've. The city always constantly advertises for. Terms on, for positions on board and commissions. Board of Building Trades is one of the more difficult ones, I guess, to get filled, but we have no other interest for these positions. They're very specific. Dan Green was general contractor, we did they see. Contractor, and we're still on electrician short. So the recommendation would be to read one.
I would move to read point with James Reynolds to the Board of Building Trades for another three years.
A motion by Commissioner Belvin, a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thanks for having me. Managers reports.
Very interesting. It's been, been pretty busy with, it announces the things we have. The FAA announced the twenty-two. AID funding awards. I think that was the beginning of last week and Concordia received six hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is the same thing that we typically refer to as entitlement funds for airport improvement program funds. So it was geared toward or allocated toward construction of a new hangar at the airport. This is the same box hangar that we've been talking about, that we've already engaged and finished it for the design. Finished how to design it, bid it, then apply for the grant, and then wait to get the grant, and then we can go out and, and build it. So. The purpose of building a new hangar is to get one on site that has a large enough door to handle the larger planes that we can now handle because we have a longer and wider runway and we do have the man for it. So we're pretty excited about that. And it's also the capital approval plan, so we'll talk more about that during our budget study session. Had a conversation with the Kansas Housing Resource Commission representatives last week and attended a couple webinars on housing this week to learn more about the middle income housing program and the sixty million that the state has infused into that fund and that things look pretty promising. I think our way, especially given the. Draft report for the, the housing studies, so we should be able to see that whole draft report here by the end of the month and then have a percentage later on this summer. We had the last meeting of the housing stakeholders last Thursday and it was very well attended, good conversation. Got to see some preliminary survey results, so really excited for them to finish up their report and get it shared with you. We also have some major changes coming to the CDVG grant funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so we participated in a public hearing there. Major changes including suspension of funding for community facilities, including emergency vehicles like the fire truck grant that we just got. And water and sewer facilities for twenty twenty-three is focusing instead on hiking trails and recreation facilities and daycare centers. And things of that nature. So the, the public area is very robust. The commons each part were very robust. There's a lot of communities that are glad that they're supporting daycare centers in particular, but are really upset that they're not gonna be supporting things like fire trucks, community facilities, and. Demolition programs and water and sewer projects for this next year. There's a lot of communities that were working toward having those applications in this year. So we'll see what happens. The final rule hasn't been out yet. That's a very interesting discussion. That's all that I have. Have any questions for me?
Staff reports.
East Water Tower rehab is underway. They're in the midst of. Power washing the outside right now. They're about half done. If you noticed, it looks pretty shabby. Paint's coming on, so. Within the next few days, they'll be in the interior sandblasted and the whole thing. Then they'll start painting. Side. For red.
Someone else? Mayor Commissioner reports. You start.
I appreciate it. The street department fixing the potholes on, on the highway. They were pretty bad.
I had a question. Somebody asked me about this. Ask you to. At the ball fields. One, they look, they look pretty solid. Give them a hell of an opportunity to spend a lot of nights out there this summer. Did a pretty good job. Certainly hope that donations or the funding for snack checks going well. I know our family is good as part. The question was about, somebody asked about the possibility of coordinating with, with college athletes in general, but specifically the baseball team to see. And we noticed that a couple of our rec staff were out there up in games. And didn't know if there'd be a potential collaboration with any baseball students that might still be in town to, whether that's a community service opportunity or other kind of position, just to, just to add.
I'm talking, there's usually nothing around. In the summer. Actually, I got one of their assistant coaches hired for some games, so. Yeah, members are now. For availability.
And maybe not just with, but I think what we're seeing with the Doian Field is, is that when we all work together, we're able to accomplish a lot more. And so. Thinking that there might be some hopeful potential to, to continue that collaboration, whether that's for student athletes or not, it'd be a good, good thing for us to try to work towards to every degree we can.
That will add that we're working some collaborations on other parts, other parks as well, not just over there, so.
And I don't have anything. So with that, for a motion to adjourn in the study session.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Belvin to adjourn and move into study session to discuss the project. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. What now? Study session in three minutes.
I was wondering if that goes in really private and comes out of somebody's faucet. Everybody's getting links paint.
That's what I was just gonna ask you. I got a two-bait memo and I got some.
Someone that blasts the outside. Just comes down the tube.
That is not sound like a job I just wanna do.
Dalton says, call it the best. It goes, oh, we'll start at five in the morning.
But it will be hot in there in the site. That's what I wondered. I've been in grain bins in the summer.
I said it's supposed to be hot.
It's gonna be dark in there anyway. I'm not really sure how they used to do it this year.
Oh, yeah.
It's something different.
The reason we did it, and this is the.
Absolutely.
All right. In the interest of time.
Get it again.
And I have a brief little note here and things of a brief history of our flood plain as I know it. And in the interest of time, I would be happy to discuss any of you after. We hear from Tara Landis-Nerth from AECom, which is an engineering firm, and we got three different. Kansas, Kandag, and she's got AECom support online. I'm sorry, from Kansas Department, and she does, she does some technical assistance. With the flood plain, trying to help us get more accurate maps. So with that.
Yes, and as Brenda mentioned, my name is Tara Landis. I'm on the floodplain team with the Kansas Department of Agriculture. And so we're here today to talk to you guys about the technical assistance project that we were able to do for, for you, to help make those floodplain maps more detailed and more accurate. I know I've got some posts on Zoom as well. You guys wanna introduce yourselves?
Hello, I'm Anthony Holder with AECom. I am the drainage engineer that, that did the drainage work and coordinated the drainage work for the modeling that we did for this project.
Everyone, Dan Curly with AECOM, I'm the project manager for for this project.
Said he needed to step out for a minute, so he might not be back yet.
No problem. So I I know we've gone over time. Anthony and Dan, are you okay to stay on or would you like to um kind of skip to some portions of the the presentation you were gonna do? I didn't know, you know, where you were at with your schedules.
I'm sorry, it was hard to hear you, Tara.
Um, I was saying, do you, are you okay to go through this full presentation, Anthony, or would you like for the sake of time to kind of skip to some parts that you you were gonna do? I I know you've been on for a while. I just, I didn't know if you had other commitments, or?
I'm good.
But okay, all right. I just wanted to check. Thank you. I appreciate you guys staying on this line. And so did you um want to share your screen or we can bring up the, we have this presentation here? So we did put together.
You got it.
Yep, we can bring it up. I'm based out of Topeka, so um decided to drive over here this evening to be able to talk to you guys about this. Um, I've been on the flooding team for eight and a half years now. And it was excited to be able to help assist with this project. And and what I was gonna do is just give you guys some background of what we do um at this state of Kansas and then how we basically came to identify this project. So um again, you know, I'm Tara here to talk to you guys about this project. So we can go ahead and I'll have a little quicker. So I was gonna give you a little bit of the big picture on the FEMA risk map process and then talk about the lower Republican custom watershed project and then get to the specifics on the scope for this Concordia project and then the results and some steps forward. So I'll try to make this background information rather brief, but just to give you a little bit of context about how we got to where we are. So um I manage all the flooding mapping projects across the state. Um, and basically what we've been doing is a statewide initiative to bring updated flooding maps across the state. And and what we do with that is we start with what's called base level engineering, which is some initial modeling, um essentially. And so this Concordia is part of the lower Republican custom watershed. Um, and you know, it was um decided to, you know, bring updated modeling here. Um, one of our goals is to make the maps more accurate. Um, and then also to, of course, it'll help you plan for your flood risk and communicate that risk and take action to protect your community. So um, if you want to go to the next slide. We've been doing this initiative across Kansas. So you can see, and we have a statewide footprint right now. All of those watersheds there are custom watersheds, and we've been doing this initial base level engineering modeling um across the state. Um, it is a two D modeling approach, which is a lot more improved than the previous one D modeling approach. I'm not going to get into the weeds on what the different colored counties mean, but essentially they're in different phases of updating the the flood insurance rate maps. And so in order for us to update a flood insurance rate map, it takes several years, um, if if we go through our process, but we're going to talk to you guys about a different way to update your maps through the Lomer process that is a lot more short timeframe. So we're gonna go to the next slide. Um, this is your current effective floodplain map. Um, so you can see there's a a lot of flooding that's depicted um in town there. Uh, but it was sculpted as what's called a zoning floodplain, and that was an approximate study. So it it was really lacking the detail that was needed to make it accurate, as I'm sure you know. And so, you know, it did not include your storm sewer system. It didn't include um that twenty first street dam. Um, it didn't include, you know, structures or anything like that. So it's showing a lot of risks that um probably isn't really there because you have the infrastructure in place to help with that. And so that one effective back in July of twenty fourteen. Um, and so that's just, just to give you a screenshot there of that. Um, and then if we go to the next slide, this was the area that we had as part of our lower Republican custom watershed. Um, that's the project that we've most recently done, where we created those initial um base level engineering models that we're calling them. And that's where we formed the basis to be able to have the models to add more detail to it, to update your floodplain map. So that's just an overview of this watershed and where we've been doing um the work here. So again, that base level engineering is similar to that zoning level analysis. Um, it depicts that one percent annual chance flood or what what's commonly referred to as that hundred year floodplain. But again, even that base level engineering initiative that we've done lacks the structures of the storms for its systems. Um, and so, but it can be enhanced with additional detail. And that's where we've come in with this technical assistance project to add that detail. Um, so that's what we're here to talk about today. And and this is just a general slide here about our technical assistance. Um, so instead of just coming um to communities and telling them we're updating your flood insurance rate map, we're also able to help um now with with mitigation on um mitigating flood hazards or doing something to um study or help model different scenarios to reduce flood risk. Um, and so um essentially what happened here was Amy and Bruton came to us and said, hey, you know, can can we use this funds to help give a more detailed study? And so we had a meeting with FEMA and they did agree that we can use those funds for that purpose. So um, just a little bit of the scope in general for this project. Um, during, of course, during that lower Republican base level engineering project, again, they they did um reach out to us. And again, I already mentioned that there's some detail lacking with the storm sewer system not being included and that twenty first street dam not there um being or being represented. And so, you know, FEMA did approve to fund the development of what's called a SWIM model. And Anthony's gonna talk to us about that um in here in a little bit. Um, and this study did include um with it the number of buildings that could be removed with the enhanced study. So looking at the number that are in now versus with the new study, what's remaining or how many are removed. So we will look at that as well. Um, this is just a little bit of background on the project. For the watershed project itself, we kicked that back up that off in June of twenty twenty one. And we did have a follow up meeting um in July of that year with Concordia and KDA and FEMA um to discuss this project that was approved. So we kicked this project off in October of twenty twenty one. And then of March, uh, in this year, we had what's called our discovery meeting as part of that process. But we also had a meeting to discuss the results of this technical assistance project. Then day, um, we were asked to come here and talk about these findings uh today. So that's why we're here. And I believe this is where I'm gonna turn it over to Anthony, and he's gonna talk more specifically about the modeling that was done to update the floodplain maps.
All right. So first of all, for some reason, the screen share froze on my end. So I have the PowerPoint open on mine. I'm gonna share my screen and swap it out if that's okay with you guys. My screen and then pull this up to start the slideshow from here. Oh, no. Okay, so um, so what we did, uh Tara told you a little bit about how the the system started. Uh, there, the old models that were done, the old analysis as it was done, uh created what's called a zone A uh floodplain. And that zone A floodplain is uh is an approximate floodplain. Uh, they're currently doing uh what's called a BLE or a base level engineering. And that is uh an improved uh model, but it still doesn't include all the details and everything that's in your uh in your city. So we were asked to 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 do what's called, to use a program called XP Swim, which does the one D, two D. Um, and we included the storm sewer systems that are that are in the this city. And we included, you can see here, the twenty first street dam and farther down south upstream is the Plum Road Dam. Uh, it included those in the model. So that slide there was the um, the base, the, excuse me, the previous slide was the um the the zone A floodplain. And this one is what the BLE model would produce. And the BLE model uh shows water throughout this area. And one of the reasons why that's uh there is that it doesn't include anything underground. And so it doesn't have that capacity to carry water underground. So all the water's gotta go overland.
Ethan, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm not sure we're seeing your screen. Can you uh see if you?
Oh, you're not seeing my screen? Hmm. Okay, let me stop sharing. Uh, share your screen again and see if maybe I can see it. Otherwise, I can, uh, I can, in the video, I can see which one you're looking at, and I can just make sure to look at the same one and uh and uh stay in sync that way, and that'll be okay by me. All right, um, I have gone to the slide that um that says twenty twenty one draft BLE in the lower right of the image, slide eleven. Can you just go to slide eleven? Are you good? Oh. I think it's slide eleven on the one that I've got.
Go ahead and try to share your screen again.
Yeah, try to share your screen again. Oh, me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try one more time and see if it works. Screen share. You got it?
One one draft BLE, that's one.
Okay, it's hard for me to hear you guys. I'm sorry. So uh, if you need to uh talk to me, try to be real loud. What was that? You're good to go? Okay, so we use the XP swim model uh to do that analysis. And so this is a picture of the uh, the BLE, and I'm gonna try to go backwards so that you can see. So this is the effective zone A. That's what's currently effective. And this is the BLE, which is the uh, what would become effective if this, if our modeling uh is not approved and you didn't and you don't ask for, I believe, well, we'll talk about what the future might hold later, uh because that's not my specialty. So what we did, uh, we took the uh storm sewer information that was provided to us. Uh, you guys provided a um a surveyed uh GIS uh layer that included your manholes, your um inlets, your storm sewer pipes. And uh, and you can see how that the red lines uh go and they connect over uh in different places. And they carry that water down toward north, toward the lower Republican River. Um, and there's a section here that comes out of the dam and then more down south that we didn't shut, that we're not showing on this now. Um, and in doing so, we were able to demonstrate that the um, the floodplain is actually much smaller. So uh, the water is uh, is contained in the dam and then comes out here and then goes back into the storm sewer. And then uh, there are some places where the water is not able to be contained by the storm sewers. And then we'll get to. I don't remember if we discussed later, but uh by doing the analysis, we can reduce the number of structures in the uh, the special flood hazard area from two hundred and forty eight to thirty five. So the, there's a hybrid approach. The firm updates that went affect that that the uh, the zone A is based on, when affected right before the twenty first street and Dan Plum Road dams were uh, were were constructed. And so those aren't included in those models. Uh, the flood risk risk is assumed. We assume that it's been reduced by the presence of those dams and storm sewer system, but it hasn't been analyzed uh in an effective way at this point. Um, so we're doing this swim model to demonstrate that benefit. So what we did, we leveraged the uh, the BLE modeling that was already done. They uh, the BLE was done with a twenty seventeen lidar data set that includes uh all of the terrain uh elevation points about every, usually about every meter. I don't remember specifically, but there's an elevation point about every meter in the entire area. Um, we use the excess rainfall from that BLE modeling that was already done. And then we use the storm sewer. And then we were also provided with as-built drawings for the dams, the two dams. And we uh, we confirmed uh to make sure that the model uh, that the two D surface was uh, was representative of what was pr- uh, what was built with the dams and that the storage in those dams is correct. So the the storm sewers that we included in the model were generally those that are twenty four inches in diameter or greater. I think there were a few that were small or because they were in specifically important areas that were kept. But generally, we use the the trunk line larger uh systems. Uh, we fixed in, we fixed a few gaps in the survey data. There were a few places where we knew what the size was upstream and size was downstream. So we estimated what it is in the middle. Um, we didn't have the slopes everywhere uh for the pipes, so we assumed a few and um and fixed them in. And we assumed those slopes based on, again, what was nearby and general uh landfall in in that area. Uh, we did compare the lidar to the storage in the dam, and we found that it matched very nicely, which was good. Um, and um, this drawing here is showing why we decided to use what's called a normal depth downstream boundary. We had two options. We could use the uh, the red and the green are the results of the BLE model um in the lower Republican for the two different storms that we were looking at. Um, and then the other is kind of what's happening at the local rainfall, uh based on the local rainfall. And uh, looking at those two, we determined that we were, it would be, it is very reasonable to uh, to basically assume that the lower Republican hasn't risen yet. And so we can let the water flow out the bottom of the model without having to uh add that lower Republican in as a boundary condition. So the basic one D, two D model setup, um, the the pipes that were included in the model are shown here. Um, the solid lines are circular pipes. The uh dashed lines are rectangular concrete box reinforced concrete boxes. They're rectangular. Um, and because there's a a fairly large number of sizes, we uh, we decided to uh symbolize it just with the uh surface area, the the opening area. Uh, so basically, green is small, uh, yellow is medium and pink is large. Uh, again, thick, uh, the larger ones are thicker, uh, so that you can kind of see where there are large ones and where there are medium sized ones here. There's a large one that splits into two medium sized ones uh when it goes downstream. And there are some other things like that that we saw in the in the model. We included all this detail so that we get the water through here, comes into the system, comes back into overland system, then goes into pipes. And then what we noticed uh that was of interest was that when it gets here, the the pipes actually turn to the east and run over here. And then it comes out over land here and then goes over toward fourth street and out this way. Um, and that was important because our original um model and based on the BLE shows the water basically just continuing north and going toward the lower Republican. So our original um area that we were asked to model was was just this area. But we needed to extend the model over here because of these pipes that uh that run off to the east. And then here's a little bit more detail, uh zoomed into that area. So you can see that uh, that there's that pipe that runs up here and then turns off to the east and then runs over. You can't really see it in the terrain, but there's a road, a railroad that runs right along here that the water uh has to run along past the railroad and then turn and 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 go under through a couple of bridges. All right. So here's a little bit of a view of the results of the model. Um, the the green and the red are the hundred year and five hundred year rainfall uh rainfall results, water surface elevations. You can see that they kind of follow each other. And then right over here, it starts to fill up this area. The pipes are there. This is representative of a pipe because, like I said, the pipe actually comes down, gets about halfway and then turns off to the east. So there's not actually a pipe that goes all the way straight down from one, from top to bottom. But I wanted to show you what the the concept that we were addressing. Um, but because the pipes don't have capacity to carry all the water, it does in fact get up and run over land. Um, and you can see that it's it's above the ground surface, but it's fairly shallow above the ground surface. And as long as it has a flow path, then it can continue down, and that's okay. All right, so back to the results. Here's the effective zone A. Um, you can see it's fairly wide and fairly expansive. Here's the two D BLE zone A, um, also fairly wide because there's again no subsurface flow. And this is the result of um, of our XP swim model. There are some pockets where the water's overland. Um, this is the main profile line that we were showing earlier. And um, like I said. And like I said, the the storm sewer doesn't follow exactly that line. The mapping that's been done. Dan's gonna have to help me on this one, but the mapping that was done the only shows depths greater than a half a foot. And so very shallow water, there is some shallow water that's running down the streets that's that is present in the model, but that is not suitable for mapping for floodplain. So we don't show that in this particular map. And there are a few places where it extends out into the streets, but mostly this is street flooding. It's not structural flooding. And then because we included this other area, you see some some overland flow and flooding in some other areas that is not shown in the previous models. And back to Tara.
Yeah, so essentially, obviously, this is good news that a lot of the areas coming out of the floodplain. Because I obviously those areas are in floodplain with the structures that have federally backed mortgages of that flood and transfer requirement. Of course, and so one of the options like ahead of getting this officially revised is that since this is a zone A, property owners could request what's called the base flood elevation from us. We have a portal that those requests can be made at. There's a link on this slide here. And essentially, with that, they can they can get that via fee and, you know, from the new study and use that as best available data. And if it's at or above the structures, well, it's just great. They can apply for what's called a letter of map amendment and get out of the floodplain now. So the thing about that, though, is there's a survey cost that would be required. So you'd have to kind of weigh what their insurance cost would be versus what a survey cost would be. But that is an option if there was something that you wanted to come out sooner. That is an option to get that data now and start using that for that purpose. On the next slide, see.
Oh, I'm sorry, I clicked the link. That was not what I intended. Hang on, slide there.
And so this slide here just talks about the options for getting this updated officially into your fund transfer rate map. There is that letter of map revision process. We have provided the models and the report and everything to the city, Jamie and Bruno. So essentially, that could be provided to the engineering firm could be hired to use that to apply for that letter of map revision. That's the fastest option for getting this updated. That would probably take six months, but if there's some back and forth on the review of that, it could, I mean, I it could take up to a year. I don't, I don't know for sure. It just depends on how that that process goes and how smoothly it goes. And there's another option, you know, at the state, we can add it as a project, but that would take longer. We've got our grant done for this year. It would have to be next year's. And it would probably take probably three years for us to be able to get it updated. So the fastest option would be that letter of map revision. And I do believe that was the intention of the city to move forward with that option.
We're our our intention was to ask the commission tonight.
Okay.
If if they want to move forward and what they want us to do.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah. And so discussion, so that's that's kind of what I was curious, if you did what you guys were thinking. And then also just wanted to know, and if there's any other support we could provide at the state or the AA can provide and just answer any questions that you guys have. So I believe that's the last slide that we had prepared for today. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
You remind us what typical costs are for a letter of.
Talk to one of the engineering firms that we've used on some other projects that also has experience during the loaners. And they gave us an estimate somewhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars, depending on how easy it is for them to import the modeling and and prepare the application. There's a potential that there may also be a cost of like an application fee of about eight thousand dollars per panel, I think. And there might be two panels that need to be.
Per panel, right?
I believe so. And I don't know if Ben is still on the line, but he was on because he's more of a loaner expert. So we thought if there was any questions, he might be able to answer those.
Yeah, hi, um, hi, this has been, let me turn my camera here. Hi, everyone. Yeah, the the fee is a flat fee regardless of how many panels. The Walmart would be revising. So if it's, you know, even though it's two panels, it would still be eight thousand dollars. And there's also a potential that the Loma could be fee exempt. The, you know, if the Loma is just based on the better newer engineering analysis and doesn't reflect or, yeah, it it doesn't reflect any projects that have modified the the floodplain. So I know there's some some dams there and the infrastructure that's modeled. But if all that infrastructure is, you know, predates the the FEMA study, and there's nothing new that would have changed it, then it can probably be a fee exempt Loma.
But since my guess is that it wouldn't because the the dancers completed just after.
Okay.
Dams were not included in the original study, but neither was the existing storm sewer system.
Right, but also the it would the Loma be based on Loma off of the zone A or off of the BLE? If it's off BLE, then these are existing. So, yeah. I don't know.
It would be based off of the the effective zone A because the BLE is.
Okay.
Yeah, it hasn't been incorporated into the FEMA mapping.
So in a previous slide, you'd shown that there is going to be water over a property that had previously not been included in the flood map. Where are those? And it looks like it's commercial. Yeah.
And we we need to look at this.
Let me share my screen again so we can pull that back up.
A cursory review when we were doing with they were on site with us. It didn't appear that that touched any structures in our eastern area, but we need to look at that a little bit closer.
Okay. Do we know the approximate amount of structures that this would take out with the Loma?
Well, two hundred and seventy eight down to thirty five.
Yeah, two forty eight.
So it's adding a few in.
It really helps the downtown area. It really helps the area along Broadway Street and Washington Street.
Trying to get it to expand a little bit across the road and then here. We use my to show that.
And that's that's because it's we're demonstrating or it's being demonstrated that it's shedding water to the the northeast, right?
And some of the areas that show up maybe like this used to be just a wing down here, and now it's expanded over into here on the street. But with this right here, basically, as a result of restrictive flow in the in the storm drain, we actually dealt with that just a couple of months ago with some debris. We kept it backed up enough. It was getting on the people's land, so they jetted it out. Fine, but I haven't really studied a lot. I know that there's some of this up in here that's expanded, but these Chevrolet got out years ago by a letter of map amendment. Looks like that's still replaced and also the hotel out here. The the new map agreed with the previous map letter of map amendment for that. There were three or four of them that were extended to the new map in two thousand and fourteen. It doesn't look like anything much changed there. The thing that I'm always in learning and enforcing this over the years is we need to have accurate maps. Now we don't have accurate map because they didn't consider our our flood control project with the map and land. It's considered our underground storm drain. Unfortunately, when we had our D I system done, we mapped that storm drain system as often as actively as we could at the time. But then I went around and there's a bunch of them first. Daniel, oh, three months ago, he sent me a piece and don't miss your not send me information and pictures and stuff. So this is as a result of that, but.
We we really appreciate the Department of Agri Santas on this and being able to talk with them on it. Because if he, whenever I started, I think Bruno and I were talking, I recall the estimate being about sixty thousand dollars for us to pay an engineering firm to come in and figure all this stuff out. And we've been working for several years to try to figure out how how much of a difference would it make on the structures in our town. And so through this grant opportunity, through this technical assistance, they're able to tell us that. They're able to tell us, we can go from two two forty eight to thirty five structures. And this is where it ends up happening. So we're pretty excited. And then to have that estimate somewhere between five and fifteen thousand and a potential for an eight thousand dollar fee to FEMA then finish the project and be done.
But you take out a significant portion of our commercial area.
Downtown, yes.
And if my memory serves correctly, sixty thousand dollars at that point of trying to challenge this almost seemed like it would have been a bargain. I I think I remember numbers a lot higher as to what it would take to really challenge this. So it's it's phenomenal to have this kind of support.
Yeah, we're we're happy to provide it and.
We're happy to receive it.
But it's, I mean, I like I like these projects where we can, where we can help and show that. Apps and I and I, I feel that I feel bad that they've been accurate for so long, but I wasn't around when they were scoped. And I know the priority is a little bit of change with FEMA. We wouldn't scope projects like this again with just the zone A study. We try to make sure they're detailed moving forward. And we're we're trying, that's why we got this statewide initiative. We're trying to go and update where we can and and correct things that have not been accurate. So so we're happy to do that.
These updated models would also support towards improving housing stock, I think. And I know Bruno would attest, if we have a structure in the floodplain for girls, the flood insurance, if somebody wants to make an improvement to their property, they can only improve it fifty percent of the value of that property once every five years. That's not much to be able to put back in towards some of these these older homes, be able to make them really nice, too. And then so you sell it and they have a mortgage and they still have flood insurance on top of that. So I think that these efforts really support our housing effort. So I mean, I I would like to ask the commission, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to do nothing? Do you want to try to work with this data to improve our maps? And if so, do you want to proceed fast and pay an engineer to do it? You want to wait a little bit and see if you can get on the grant and have them do it for free and take a little bit longer? How would you like?
My personal opinion is sooner the better, since the cost we're looking at is is less than it was we anticipated before. We've got a housing study out. We've got housing opportunities ahead. I think the the sooner that we can capitalize on this information and make it applicable, the better off we are.
Would it been possible to wait until the dam was?
This is this does. Yes, sir. The current the current maps that Bruno has to use to help you.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, if you if you went through the Loma process, it'd be that that fee that Amy mentioned, but it would be the fastest way of getting this to be pro regulatory, like the updated, the official map. And it will include the storm sewer system effect. And that's the result of a reduction that you're seeing. We saw it before, and this is the actor. So it is a, you know, obviously, a large reduction in the thing there, so.
Yeah, I think we need to move ahead as fast.
I tried to zoom in too on some of their commercial properties, and it does look like most of the the buildings are elevated and that it'd be where the parking spaces that are. I mean, that's a very scientific study, but. I squinted a little real hard, so.
We we do, and we we do have a link to a webinar that we could provide for review. It's not like a public facing one, but like if if you guys wanted to look at it, be able to zoom in more to review that before you decide what we want to do with the future plan.
That'd be helpful, and I could send that to commissioners and to staff here, and then we can to the top of the engineering firms and then at the time of Rebecca, those we can look in.
Okay.
So did I also understand that if an individual property owner wanted to move faster than than that, they they put that link and pursue that?
There is the option to request the base validation information now. So and like I said, it it would require that survey that would prove that it's that the lowest due date is either above that base level elevation, but but it could be eligible for a letter of amendment sooner than than waiting for the Loma or waiting for us to update it. So.
Do you have any idea what what the differing timeframes would be?
Between doing.
Like between an individual, between expediting this process, you thought the grant process might be a couple of years. So what are the what would be individual timeframe here? What would the expedited timeframe be?
Like through the Loma or anyone? So and and Ben's on there, but I mean, I think a lower minimum would take six months, but depending upon like the amount of review back and forth, I mean.
So that was what you're saying, six months to a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my best guess. But if if we were to take it on at this date, it could probably be like three years before we could get it officially updated.
And then for the individual, would that be pretty much as soon as they can contact the engineering or surveying?
Yeah, I mean, we can we process the baseball evasions pretty quickly, but the the surveyor would depend upon how long it would take them to come out and do that. But I think the review process for the Loma would be about thirty days. So they could potentially, I think, on how fast the survey gets done and when we submit the Loma, it could be about thirty days or so after that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And once this is done, just like getting to a point, I don't know, E F and G is that once the Loma is done, does a homeowner just need to provide that to their mortgage company? Is that typically how it would do to make it so they didn't have to do flood insurance anymore?
So I mean, eventually, the, I mean, the lender should know, because once it's updated officially on the firm, it will be official. So, yeah, but as part of the Loma process, I do believe there's a public notification process. And it's it's not typically required if the B F Ps are are decreasing, but if there's any increase at all anywhere, it would be required.
You have to notify the people who are getting an increase.
Yeah, and so I do believe.
Officially, you have to give them the.
And there is an appeal period on the ninety day period associated with a Loma as well. But that's a pretty standard when we update, even if we did that through our process, there is that that would be required as well. So.
So by the time we just need some direction.
We appreciate it. Tremendous news for.
Refreshing information.
Yeah. The other thing we can help support with. Temple, we got reached. We, we, as part of our process, we do like a public event house and we'll come out and help talk to the public about changes in the house and stuff like that. So if there's interest in that, us and they can support you. I know this is this is good news, so. It's not how much.
Yeah. I mean, that was pretty, our things changed a lot. And it was, I mean, talk about people having to spend personal funds and people being having to lower the price of their homes for sale. It was devastating to a lot of people. So. Yeah. It's it's a little guilty till proven innocent. I love that, but let's do it. Thank you very much.
I'm afraid that I need to need to bow out. I have somewhere to go. And I thank you guys for having us and and letting me come and and show our work to you. And I hope you guys have a a great evening. Yeah, goodbye.
Thanks for coming on to this. Thank you for your patience. anticipated wrapping up a little bit early.